Meeting is hereby called to order at 7:02. Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Microphones on, everyone.
Peter Yarim.
Present.
Wellarosa.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner here. Charlie Masterbirdy.
Here.
Andrew Granowitz.
Here.
Lynn Skow.
Here.
James Bailey Brizlin.
Bob Gillespie.
For the members of our audience, in the event of a fire or fire alarm, two means of egress from the chambers. One is to your right, out the double doors. Take the first left, down the stairs, out into the town parking lot. The other is to the rear of the chambers, out onto the landing, down the stairs and out onto the town green. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who are not familiar with our board, I'll just give you a quick summary of how we're going to conduct business tonight. The secretary will read the legal notice. You'll be asked to come before the board, state your name and address for the record. You have an opportunity to present your application. The board may or may not ask questions. The audience will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or against your application. If someone does speak, then the applicant will have the opportunity for final comment. Additional information that's not submitted while the public hearing is... If you have information that we may not have with us and you wish to submit it, it needs to be submitted during your public hearing. Once your public hearing is closed, we will not accept any other information for review. And comments made by the public that are not relevant to the exercise of the Commission's statutory or regulatory authority will not be considered by the Commission in reaching its decision. Once your application has been presented, most likely, we're going to vote on it tonight. So you'll have an opportunity to where you stand with your application. You will be getting written confirmation from the town at some point in the near future. And for the record, a variance could be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance and where strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties where use of the property or reasonable use of the land would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting the variance. Madam Secretary?
Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold public hearings on Monday, April 27, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the town hall, first floor, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2015-0301, Herschel LLC, Enfield Liquor Warehouse, 496 Enfield Street, MAP 33, Lot 100. BL Zone Appeal of Order or Decision of Zoning Official of Article 9A and Article 9.10 of the Enfield zoning regulations. Actually, I think that's 11. It's 11, right? Jenny, am I just reading it backwards?
No, I think you're right.
It's 11A and 11.10.
This application was scheduled for tonight. However, the applicant has requested a postponement until next month. And because it's been advertised, we need to enter it into the record. So, Madam Secretary, would you just read the highlighted areas?
Letter from Fahey and Landalina Attorneys LLC, March 23, 2015, to Virginia Higley, CEO of the town of Enfield. Read the 496 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. Dear Ms. Higley, I understand that the next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is scheduled for April 27, 2015. I am not available on that date and would request that the matter be scheduled for the May 2015 meeting. Very truly yours, Carl Landalina. There is other words on this piece of paper, but those are the most relevant.
Thank you. So, next application, please.
ZBA 2015-03-02, Renee C. LaPointe, applicant owner of 240 Pearl Street, MAP 20, Lot 77, zoned R33, requesting a lot coverage variance of 2.3% to build an open deck. Article 4, EZR Section 4.10.
Would the applicant please come forward?
Hi, I'm Renee LaPointe. I own 240 Pearl. And this is my friend George.
Can you just check and make sure your microphone, that the red button is on?
Yep.
All right. Pull it a little closer.
Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm Renee LaPointe, and I own 240 Pearl. And this is my friend George. And he's going to be speaking on my behalf, because I get a little nervous speaking.
George, can I get your full name and address?
Yes, my name is George Hathaway, 3 Play Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
Thank you. Tell us about your application.
Sure will. Just for the record, I am a combat veteran of Vietnam. I'm happy to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you. Ms. LaPointe's house was built in 1935, and the building lot is very small. In fact, it's only 6,250 square feet for an R33-zoned lot. The proposed deck is... It adheres to all of the current zoning requirements except for one. And that is that R33 lots are required to have no more than 20% of the lot size built upon. And her current structure occupies a little bit over 20%. And she's asking for a variance to allow her to put a small deck onto the back of her property to provide her access to an above-ground pool that she has in the backyard. And the amount of increase, if you will, over the 20% maximum is only 2.3% of the property's square footage. And that's the reason for the appearance here tonight.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Jenny, is this one of the actual R33s of 33,000 square feet? It may be here, and I just missed it.
Yes.
It is that?
It's an R33, but that's a legal non-conforming.
Right, it's a legal non-conforming. So it's not the actual R33. It's just zoned that way? So it is a smaller lot?
Yes.
What's the actual size?
The actual size of the lot is 0.12 acres or 6,098.4 square feet.
Thank you.
That's according to the assessment's records.
Right, that's right.
Other questions?
I don't have any at this time, though.
Got any, Sam?
No.
I have a couple. How did you... The calculations that you gave us are different from the calculations the town gave us.
That's correct.
Where did you get your calculations?
I was an engineer for my career, and I do some pretty precise work in my engineering experience. I went out and literally measured by inch, the exact measurements of the house. And I found that the town's records are not correct in a couple of situations. And so that's why I was showing a different square footage than perhaps the town record
How did you come up with the square footage of the deck?
Of the deck?
Yeah.
Well, what I did was certainly it's 13 by 16 square feet... Excuse me, 13 feet by 16 feet. And the deck is going to abut the circle... The arc of the pool, as you probably can see from the diagrams, right? It's difficult to measure the square footage of an arc in that situation. I did a lot of research on it and could not come up with an exact tool to help provide that. So I did an estimate based on what I could see, and it's pretty close to what I believe the actual square footage would be for that particular section.
And did you also deduct the square footage of where it butts the porch?
No, I didn't. That's a good point. I did not.
It appears...
It looks like it's straight across.
That you are going around the porch.
Right. It does. But it goes in and then around the porch. I did not eliminate that square footage. It's probably just a few square feet.
I got 12 square feet.
Did you? Okay. Thank you.
How is the deck... The construction of the deck, how is it going to be supported? How is it... Is it attached to the existing building, or is it freestanding?
It's freestanding.
Okay.
There is a retaining wall that we put up last summer. I'm sorry?
August.
August of last summer. And the deck will not sit on the retaining wall. It will have its own supports independent of both the wall and the house. So it will not be attached to the house. It will be independent. There has to be some room around the pool so that the cover can be put on it and taken off in the winter and the summer.
One final question.
Sure.
On the questionnaire, that is part of the application.
Mm-hmm.
Question number one says, "What particular physical conditions or characteristics make the property unique compared to others in the same neighborhood or zoning district?" And your response was, "It's an all-brick home, recently converted from oil heat to high-quality environmentally clean natural gas heat." But that's not answering the question as it's meant. The question means, "What physical characteristics are unique to this particular parcel..."
Sure.
"...than others in the neighborhood?"
Well, sure. In fact, our immediate neighbor on both sides of the house have decks themselves. One just enclosed it recently. And so we're... Her home is the only one that doesn't have a deck in the back of the house.
They have pools as well?
They don't have pools. No, they don't.
Isn't it more like the slope?
I'm sorry?
I noticed when I went out to see it, there's more of a slope.
Oh, yeah. It's quite a considerable slope, right? That's why we had to put in a retaining wall, because it just would not have worked without it. The other thing about the deck is that the pool, right now, requires an A-frame ladder to get in and out of it, which cannot be anchored or secured to anything. It's very... It's a problem situation. And last summer, Renee actually... As you get out of the pool, you hold on to the upper portions of the ladder. If you put too much weight on one side, it actually tips over. And she bruised her elbow coming out of the pool. And that's when we said, "Wait a minute. We shouldn't have to go through this. Isn't there something we could do?" And that's where the idea of the deck came from, because a stairway into the pool... We bought that. And it attaches to a handrail that would attach to a deck. So it would need the deck to attach that to it, to make as a secure entry and exit from the pool.
So your neighbors have decks, but they also have significantly larger yards, do they not?
No, they... I'm sorry, no, they don't.
No?
If you were to take a look at the property, they're all built, I think, pretty much in our direct neighborhood there. The homes are probably built by the same person, and the lot size appears to be the same. I don't know. I haven't taken measurements myself. But they are not extensive. The school, Sabrinard School, abuts the property line.
Right.
And it's a straight property line. If you look at the town maps, you'll see it's a straight across property line. So we have pretty much the same situation in each lot, appears, anyway.
Okay. The road that comes down, you guys share a driveway... Where your driveway comes out, is that actually part of the town road? Because it didn't appear on the map as a part of the road.
Right. This was an issue maybe 18 months ago. And we worked with the town engineer. We worked with the police department. We worked with Public Works, because we were curious. The town was... The road, if you will, was not patrolled by the police. It is not plowed by town maintenance. And its address to the school is 232 Pearl Street. The here... The investigation of this resulted last year in the zoning enforcement officer indicating to us that, in fact, that was not a road, but a driveway to the school. And that allowed Renee to put the pool in where she is because of the offset... Or the setback, whatever you'd call it, from the property line and the road, et cetera. But it is a... The ruling at that time was that it was a driveway and not a road. And secondly, we were given the permit. She was given the permit to go ahead and put the pool in because of the ruling that they had made. Yep?
Okay. So would you consider that, going back to question number one?
Yes.
Would you consider that a uniqueness of the property, that you have that driveway that no one else has?
Well, it's an interesting question. It is a unique driveway situation. We're on somebody else's driveway to get into her driveway. That's certainly an aspect of it. I don't know how it relates to the deck, except that it's an indication of the uniqueness of the property.
Okay. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak against it? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Made by Mary Ann, seconded by Mo.
I went out to the property today, and because of the slope of the yard, and you can see why they had to... Needed the retaining wall, the property does cause them an issue to try to get in and out of the pool. The pool is above ground, so like anything else that's above ground, it's temporary. The deck, too, would then be temporary. So I don't see this to be an issue.
Any further discussion? Sensing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes 5-0-0. You have your variance. Make her the motion. Reasoning?
Well, for the property in the yard, the need for the retaining wall, and that it's temporary.
Would Morgan form to...
The property has a deep slope on it from the porch, and the retaining wall is helping with the escarpment. The pool is there, and it's not going to need... It's a temporary structure. Pools are considered temporary, and since the deck is not attached to the house as
Next application, please.
ZBA 2015-0401, Joseph Bosco, applicant owner, 74 Town Farm Road, AKA O'Neal's Road, May 71, Lot 4, MAP... Excuse me. MAP 71, Lot 4, zoned R44. Requesting variance of front yard setback to install a 14 by 16 plus or minus addition to act as retaining wall. An addition to be added able to stabilize the foundation embankment. Current has 22 feet to the property line, zero is requested.
Mr. Bosco.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Name and address, please.
Joseph Bosco, 74 Town Farm Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm here before the Commission looking for a variance to install a retaining wall. But the problem is, my foundation has become exposed because of the grating of the property, and the escarpment soils are washing away. And I need this retaining wall slash addition for stabilization of my foundation so it doesn't deteriorate any more than it is.
Can you give us a little history on the property?
The original house was supposedly built in the 20s. At that time, there was an old stagecoach road that ran through the back of the property. Right around 1978, the town dis... The town discontinued the road, but never abandoned it. So, right now, it's a paper street. And the house was remodeled in 2002. They jacked it up, put a new foundation. The town allowed them to put an addition on and put a walkout basement. Under the walkout basement, they never put the foundation three feet below grade. So as the foundation... As the dirt on the side is eroding because of the grade, the foundation became exposed. This year, from the frost, it actually pushed up and cracked some of the drywall inside the house. So there's a couple of different things that are going on down here. I don't want to build an actual retaining wall that needs to go three feet below the footing, because if I do, the escarpment soils there are so fine, I could fear collapse of my foundation if it starts to wash out. So we're going to put two walls above grade, one wall below grade, and that way, we don't have to dig under the foundation to install the retaining wall.
Can you give us a description of the walkout area?
It's... Well, you have...
I guess what I'm leading to is, there's an area... There's a pair of doors in this area.
Correct. It's a walkout basement.
Right. So that's the purpose of holding...
Correct.
Not filling it all in.
Correct. Right. There's a walkout basement there. And as you can see, the grade of the property, when they put the walkout basement, is it's just washing away. I think the only thing stabilizing the whole hill is one tree that was probably be in jeopardy of falling pretty soon if it keeps riled and more around the base of the tree.
The way it looked to me, Mr. Bosco, when I went out to the property, is that they probably built the addition, and those embankments were there.
Correct.
And they're just disappearing, because they didn't do anything to keep them in play.
Right. Yeah, retaining wall has to be installed there. It should have been done in the beginning and never was. As you can see, it expanded quite a bit, too. Down to the point where my deck is actually... The piers that the deck are on are settling back out, and that's getting ready to create a problem.
Questions of the board?
So, just to make sure I understand, so what exactly does the variance that he's requesting, are we supposed to be giving him? Is it the distance to the Nealan Paper Road?
Zero feet.
Means right up to it.
Right up to it.
Got it.
Do we even know where this road belongs? I mean, I went out to the property, and I certainly see what your issue is.
But there's no...
But in my head, there's no road.
There is no road. There is no road. There never will be a road. It's just, because it's a paper street, it's there.
And there's nobody that relies on that for access, right?
Just, you know what?
Because the other parcel connects off of the paved Nealan's Road.
Correct. You know, the cost that would be incurred to continue it back to Nealan's Road would be astronomical, and there'd be no reason for it. You know, then you'd have to go through wetlands, and it never will be a road. It's just, it's there.
The worst scenario is, if it did become a road, they could just move over the other way.
Correct.
And you would have to have that conversation with whoever thinks they need to open the road and make a deal.
Correct.
Got it.
But without this project being done, your house is in jeopardy.
Of course. Yep. Yeah, the foundation, like I said, it already lifted and heaved this winter.
Okay. And just to clarify, you own both sides of this paper road?
Correct.
So...
If the town would have done...
If the road needs to be moved, it's moved onto...
Onto my property. Yeah, it could go either way. If the town did what, you know, was they should have done in the first place, they should have... When they discontinued it, they should have abandoned it, and there wouldn't be no question
Any further questions?
No.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak against it? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Charlie.
I'll stay out of this one.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Well, I think if we don't give this to him and he doesn't move quickly, he's going to have a collapsed home on his hands. So...
He's got a large area of foundation exposed, and, you know, if you guys went out to the property, the tree he spoke of, I mean, if that... Something happens to that tree, that's it. There's no soil left. That's the only thing holding on to the soil there.
And it's a unique piece of property, because it's on the escarpment soil.
Right.
And it has the road that nobody uses next to it.
Yeah, that's... That's what I was trying to figure out. Where does the road come in? Because I don't know where the road is. You can't go on the property and see the road anywhere.
It's on someone's memory.
Right, exactly. There's no soil.
Probably behind your house.
Any further discussion? Sensing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes 5-0. Make her the motion.
It's a hazard right now if he leaves it as is, and his home is in danger of collapsing.
Due to the escarpment.
Madam Secretary?
ZBA 2015-0402, Colvest Group L., Limited, applicant, Hazard Avenue Management Enterprises LLC, owner. 544 Hazard Ave., MAP 101, Lot 192, Zone BL. Requesting variance of parking lot set from 25 to 26. Requesting variance of parking lot set from 25 to 7 feet. Variance from a Type C buffer from 35 feet to 25 feet. Driveway setback from side property lines from 10 feet to 0 feet. Pavement setback from west side of building from 10 feet to 0 feet, and from 10 feet to 7 feet on the north and east side of the building. EZR Sections 10.10.72, 10.20B3, and 10.10.7A46. Dated this 14th day of April 2015. Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal inquirer, April 15th and April 21st, 2015.
Gentlemen, names and addresses, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the applicant, the Colvest Group, Attorney Thomas Fahey. I'm from Windsorlax. I have an office on Spring Street. Isn't this on? Want me to repeat that?
Please.
Yeah. My name is Attorney Thomas Fahey. I have an office at 487 Spring Street in Windsorlax. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Colvest Group. To my right is Mr. Peter LePointe. He's the Vice President of Construction for Colvest. To my left is Dana Steele, the Project Engineer.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to table this application for the following reason. Variances are not given until due process or the applicant has been before Planning and Zoning Commission to review, and I know that this project has gone through the ART, and it was pulled after that. So, right now, we would be remiss if we move forward with any variances.
Is that correct?
Second.
The application was not pulled from here. When was this? This was the report?
No, have you been before planning and zoning?
We've been before, we had an informal ART. We have not appeared before planning and zoning. And for the record, I had a discussion with the town planner, the new town planner, Shawn Rera, because I was made aware of this position that the zoning Board of Appeals has taken on other applications. It was my understanding that he had a discussion with Ms. Turner.
Excuse me.
What?
There has been no discussion.
Okay.
Right.
Has not taken-
It's my understanding that they ran into each other in the hallway and had a brief discussion.
Excuse me.
Whether that happened or not.
That did not happen.
Okay.
I've only met Mr., the new planner.
So, we do have a town protocol that before an applicant comes before ZBA, that they do their due diligence with the other land use boards and commissions. So, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Do we get a chance to comment, or?
No. I'm sorry.
And you couldn't have told us this before making us all come here this evening? I mean, if you were going to pull it when you accepted the application, you should have had at least a courtesy to tell us. Why you make us come here and tell us now?
I'm just hearing about it tonight.
You're the chairman of the commission, and you know, this is-
This is the first communication I've had on it.
You've had this application for weeks.
Mr. Chairman, we're not here to debate it. Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to ask Jenny Higley to please have the planner call me tomorrow, Shawn, so we can discuss what Mr. Fahey has brought to my attention.
Is there a specific time that's good for you?
Sometime around 10:00. Between 10:00 and 11:00 will be fine.
Okay.
You have my number?
Pardon me?
You have my number?
In my contact list, yes.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Is it possible, could we get a look at that, or is that now moved? Can we get it?
When they come back before us, or when they go to planning and zoning.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
They need to go through the proper channels. Ma'am?
Could you explain in real, like dumb it down, what just happened?
Yes.
Or what will, what's the, you know, what was happening?
Yeah, all residents are here for that. We'll proceed.
We have, within the town land use boards and commissions, we have a policy through the town manager's office that before someone comes before the zoning board of appeals to get a variance, they need to go through all the other boards and commissions before. And the reason being is, if they come before us and we grant them a variance, that variance stays with the land forever. It never goes away. And handing out variances is far and few between. So, if we give someone a variance, they can run with it as they choose, and they can use it to their benefit for something else that they may not intend to use it for. So, we're very careful that we follow proper procedure. Ma'am?
One more, because what's ART?
It's a review committee.
Administrative Moat Team.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. So, will he have to put a sign on the property so that we would be aware that we would have to come to a hearing and see what was going on? Even going through all the other zoning? Okay, great. Keep everybody not in their head of their-
They need to post.
Pardon me?
There needs to be publication on it.
Okay.
Anything else from the audience?
Would that publication be on the website? Or is it just a-
Jenny?
Sign that's put on the property?
If you, there should be a sign, but always, there's an agenda on the web page under committees, commissions, and you can always stop in second floor, Planning and Zoning, to pick up a paper copy about a week before a meeting. And just so you'll know, Planning and Zoning meets usually the first and third Thursday of every month. Zoning Board of Appeals meets usually the last Monday of the month. Next month will be sooner because there's a holiday. And Wetlands, should they need to go to Wetlands, meets the first and third Tuesday of every month.
Okay. Any other questions, folks?
If it has to go through a clear system, so is it possible that if it fails to clear any of those, it would not make its point again?
If it doesn't make it through the other boards and commissions, then they can't come before us. They need approval all the way down the line before they get to us. So, their next step should be planning and zoning.
Your system is so low. I've got hearing aids on, and I-
So do I.
Is there any volume that you can control that?
I've been remiss. The town provides for the audience and some of the members to some of the boards, things that amplify the hearing. I don't know how they work with hearing aids, but Councilman Edgar uses it, and if anybody ever needs one, come up and see me before the meeting, and we'll pull one for you. You're here. Some have fresh batteries and some don't. I apologize. I didn't think of it.
You're welcome. Okay, moving along.
Both don'ts.
You have an admirer.
I was going to say, we'll tease you later.
Okay, in your packets, you have the February 23rd, 2015 regular meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Sensing none. All those in favor? Motion passes 5-0. You also have the March 26th, 2015 special meeting.
I was there. It was good.
From what I gather, since we need a unanimous vote, Andrew was the participant, so Andrew, was there a meeting?
There was.
And Andrew, were you present?
I was.
And, hold it.
No business.
I got one more question. Did it start at 5:30 and adjourn at 9:00?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes.
I abstain, I wasn't there.
Well, we're acknowledging what Andrew's telling us.
I wish you'd called me, because I was supposed to go, and I forgot. So, in the future, fellow board members-
Yeah, I could have picked you up on the way.
-call your friends, so we can all drive together, and then, because I had it in my calendar and completely lost it.
Correspondents and staff report.
Wait a minute. How many sets of minutes do I have here? Two sets of minutes in a special meeting?
Okay, so all the minutes are approved?
Wait.
Yes.
Two sets of minutes in-
5-0.
Um, staff comments.
Jenny, just for clarification, I did vote on it. I read the minutes, and I watched the tape.
Thank you.
Even though I wasn't here.
Thank you.
So, I did not abstain. I did vote.
Okay. I do agree with Andrew. It was a very good meeting, and I'm sorry more of you couldn't make it. Had a very good speaker this time around.
Reminding notices. I get reminded on everything other than, please-
I will make sure if-
Please send a reminder.
Yeah, because that's always a good meeting.
Yes, and I was really, and I always have a great meal.
If I'm your liaison next year, I will make sure and remind you.
Just so, the minutes-
And if not, I'll try and remind you anyway.
Just trying to remind you that there was actually one set of minutes that I'm signing, and one that we're correcting from my changes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
There were a couple things in your packet. The first one was from Rich Metcalf. He's our housing code enforcement officer, and he thought that, he wanted to bring to your attention the Fair Rent Housing Act. And if you have any questions, he's always available, and is very willing to share his knowledge with people. You've got your town attorney report about the upcoming suits. If you have any questions, let me know, and I'll pass them along. I gave you the 2014 list of action taken. The next meeting will have the 2015.
I have some questions on this, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just do one more thing before you do that? Maureen Mullin sent you all a handwritten letter, and she's here tonight, and I'm sure she would like to comment on it.
Please go forward.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the folks in the hallway to, because I'm going to get picked up?
Hello again. I'm Maureen Mullin, 1625 King Street.
Just pull the microphone in a little.
You know, that's as far as it comes.
Oh, okay.
This way. I came tonight to make sure that you all had your invitations to come to see the site of the problems between the Public Safety Academy and myself. I didn't know if you needed an actual invitation to come on site, if there's any need for you to come down to see how things currently are or not. So, that's why I came, or to answer any questions that you might have.
I think we're all very aware of the situation. We may not personally meet with you, but we have been to the property numerous times. We know the conditions, and we get a monthly report from the town attorney's office, keeping us advised as to where we are with this court hearing. So, we are aware of what's going on.
I know that it looks one way from PSA territory compared to where I am down lower, so that's why I was extending the invitation. Okay. Thank you.
If Mrs. Mullin, if the land use board plans to go out, whoever it is, maybe she could just let us know through our liaison if there's a meeting scheduled, and then if we all want to go, or some of us want to go, we can.
Perfect.
We would need to see who's, you know, what's the plan, what's the date, what's the time, if other land use boards are also planning. So, maybe Jenny could take a poll, find out, to set something up, if that's the-
I haven't heard anything yet.
Maybe we, Jenny, again, through the chairman?
If it would be helpful for you to see, I just wanted to offer you the invitation.
Can you follow up and see if any of the other land use boards were having any intentions of going out, and if so, when? And then just get us all, keep us all on the same email?
Certainly.
This was, this was also addressed to the council? The town council?
What Ms. Mullin did was, she made copies for Wetlands, she made copies for zoning Board of Appeals. I assume she made copies for planning and zoning, and she made a set for the town council. So, everybody is aware of it.
Everybody had the same information, the same invitation. If it would be of help for you to come, you're very welcome to come. I just asked that you call, and it's best between 10:00 and 7:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while I think of it before Mary Ann's questions, I just want to remind everybody, please keep all your materials on your VASI on Enfield Street, the one that got continued, because I won't be sending out another set. Got any questions, let me know.
And we should keep them on the Hazard Avenue property, too?
Oh, thank you, yes.
Both of those.
Yeah.
Okay. Other business?
I just want to comment on the document, the legal size document that Jenny gave us. I think what I'd like to ask you to do is put one more column after action taken with complied. The first three, you answered it. They did comply. But when you get down to crack, you don't tell us, did they take the fence and put six feet?
Okay.
So, we don't have an answer.
No.
Which means we have to get out there and go look.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And the one on Brainerd Road, that one there, we, he removed his variance. He, whatever the words are.
He withdrew it.
He withdrew his variance because he had other options, so-
Right.
That would actually be the answer.
That's what it says under action taken.
Right. So, that part would be put over on the answer or compliance part of it.
Okay.
So.
That can actually come off.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to be there.
Has nothing to do with us.
Well, I think when we originally asked her for this document, we asked her to give us everything that came in front of us, and how they complied or didn't, or where we were. So, we knew that someone, they got the conditions were done.
Right.
So.
So, it was a running tally of what?
It was just a running tally.
And just so you all know, I've been nibbling at the zoning compliance. You know, I have a stack of them, but I'm doing a few at a time, and I am working on them.
Good. Any other business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. You were right.